Chief, we are now recording.
Okay. Okay. There we go. So I'd like to call this meeting to order, or this workshop to order. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America, the Republic which stands with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dana, can you do roll call?
Yes, Sayusla Valley Fire Director Green.
Here.
Director Hickson.
Here.
Director Burns.
Here.
Director Polisi.
Here.
Director Spade.
Here.
For Western Lane Ambulance Director Russell.
Here.
Director Murphy.
Here.
Director Yesney.
Here.
Director Farnsworth.
Here.
Director Webb.
Here.
Western Lane Fire and EMS Authority Director Murphy.
Here.
Director Spade.
Here.
Director Russell.
Here.
Director Polisi.
Here.
We have everyone here, Chief.
Awesome, thank you Dana. So good evening, everybody. Welcome. I just wanted, I wanted to recap real quickly what we're trying to accomplish with these Thursday evening workshops. And if you remember last month, we had several discussions, variety of issues, based on where we're going as a district, up to and including a potential merger. I think at that time, it was apparent the directors had various opinions as to where we should be heading. Or I'm sure some didn't have enough information to form an opinion yet. And that's why, that's what these are done. So these workshops have been set up to give our directors all the information that we can so they can express an informed opinion. So if you remember in the first meeting, we wanted to capture where we've been. So we reviewed our current strategic plans, which, as you remember, resulted in a recommendation to start a new strategic planning process. But tonight, I want to look a little bit more into the future, both near-term future and long-term future. And just have an introductory conversation on consolidation or merger. And then next week, we're going to have a presentation by a PERS employee, which represents some really long-term issues that we know we're going to have to deal with. So tonight, Matt's going to present some opinions we gathered from our employees and volunteers from both districts. Originally, we had started out with the idea that we just wanted to see what our people are thinking when they hear us mention consolidating or merging, what opportunities they think might exist, as well as what concerns them. And a lot of this came from a discussion I had with Director Yesney. And we knew that there were a lot of different opinions out there, so we wanted to start capturing them. And then this morphed into an analysis of strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, or challenges of a consolidation or merger. And many of you have heard of a SWOT analysis, S-W-O-T, or SWOT analysis, SWO-C, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, challenges, concerns, or threats. And essentially, that's what it turned it out to be. So Matt collected, collated all the written feedback we got. And then we sat down with each shift to clarify some of their comments. We didn't attempt to filter any of the comments because we asked for honest opinions, and that's what you'll see tonight. Some of the people weren't comfortable when we started this process because we didn't have a consolidation or merger plan in our hands, so they could review it. And really, that's fine, mainly because there isn't a plan, at least one that's been approved by the directors. And the comments we received are actually going to be very beneficial to us if we do decide to develop a plan. Either if we develop it internally, or we hire an outside agency to complete a plan for us, or if we decide that's not the direction we want to go. So tonight, Matt's going to go through comments and feedback. And then I'm going to follow that up with a draft timeline, which shows us going from an enhanced sharing of personnel and resources, which really, we're starting that now, we have been for several months. Then going to a functional consolidation, and finally to a merger of the districts. Again, that's just a draft, just open for discussion. And then at the end of tonight, we hope to capture some feedback from our directors to go with our employees and volunteers. We want to know what the directors have as hopes and concerns about consolidating or merging. You're not voting tonight on whether or not this is the path we're going to take, but I want to make sure that we're all looking at the same information when we do have that discussion. And I think when you go over the timeline, you'll see that we're going to accomplish many of those first steps anyway, that enhance sharing of personnel and resources, no matter where we're going to end up with on this pathway. So directors, feel free to ask questions anytime. We will make sure that everyone has the opportunity to comment at the end. Just directors, we're not opening this up to public comment. And we have a lot of public here, which is great. My goal is to be out of here at 6:30. But again, we'll stay here as long as necessary to make sure everybody's heard. So with that, I'll turn it over to Matt. And Matt, you should be able to share your screen. Maybe.
Can you share it, Chief? Because I'm not on the fire department I'm in within mine, it's in my my documents.
I have the version that I had.
Yeah, that's the one that we sent out, the part of the board packet.
I thought you would give it up. Well, okay, we'll do that. How's this look?
I need to silence this, we got tapped out too mutually, excuse me for a second.
Oh my goodness.
So thank you, and what I'm going to be doing is going over the collation of documents that would, what I did is handed out Chief Schick's SWOT analysis and the questions that were asked to the staff. Then we went back to each staff on each shift, A, B, and C shift, met with them individually and had conversations on, you know, what do they think the strengths of a functional consolidation is? What are the weaknesses? What are the opportunities? And what are some concerns? Really good feedback, really good, open, honest feedback. Regardless of whether we go with it or not, I think we have some really good information here that we can focus in on and continue to develop in the districts. What I would like to do is go through each section. So I'll go through strengths first, and I will comment on all of it, and then I'll open it up for discussion. And what we're after is the boards, what is the board's opinions on what is the strength of having a functional consolidation to the question? And just have a few minutes of conversation around those topics as we go through the four areas. So I'll start off with the first question with strengths. Would a functional consolidation merger of the two districts provide a synergistic benefit? Could a merger lead to enhanced delivery of emergency services? Some of the feedback that the staff had stated was, yeah, there would be better, a strength would be cohesion, better resource management. Another strength would quality of care for the districts, familiarity with each other's operations and providing higher patient care. Additional staffing, more providers, cross-trained staffing, more firefighters, cross-knowledge on the jobs between each other, awareness, being able to assist with each other on scenes seamlessly, binding arbitration, no strike, tiered response, common industry response models. One team, one agency, one budget, one board, you can go on and on about one. Less room for mistakes. Depending on the staff model could be a strength, strengthening the ASA and financial consolidation of the districts into one. And dual roles interest versus single role interest. So this is some of the strengths that the staff had identified. And again, we'd open up with the Zoom meeting, it's kind of difficult. To see if anybody has a comment, we'll try to go in order and have discussions, and we can answer any questions as well.
Matt, this is Ron Green. I'm kind of interested in hearing from Director Polisi, who's come out of the industry. But I'd like to know a little bit about
whether or not Could be more chances.
Something that is normally done in a lot of communities, and how unique we would be if we were on our own doing this.
Ron, you were broken up, I caught part of that.
Maybe my internet connection is poor, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, I was interested to hear from you, Director Polisi, but also wanted to know on the strengths side, is this a model that is consistently used elsewhere? And, you know, what are your perspectives of strengths of consolidation?
Well, yes, this is. I've been through three mergers in my professional career, and the SWOT was used. And looking just at these bullet point items, they are common. They can be broken down even further if that's the route we choose to go. The consolidation factor of bringing two agencies into one is for, number one, better service to the community, two, fiscal responsibility. And also, it really helps with personnel for the long term as far as career advancement and succession planning. Industry standards show that, that when you bring two professional agencies together, whether it's solid fire and solid EMS, or a combination of they're both, each one has a benefit to bring to the table to make the organization stronger. So when I see what Matt and the chief have done with the staff, yeah, this is good, this is a good first start, I like it. I don't see breakdown further on equipment, training, et cetera, but that comes later. And that depends on, you know, which staffing model the chief and Chief House decide to present if we go down that road. Does that answer your question?
You bet, and I wasn't trying to pitch you a softball as to
No, that's all right.
Why this is a good idea, as Chief House asks us to comment on weaknesses, I would love to hear your perspective as well, so.
Okay, when we go through the weakness, thank you.
Jim, can I ask you, were those consolidations ambulance and fire coming together, or were they like fire and fire?
They were fire EMS, but not with transport. So we had firefighter paramedics from multiple agencies, but the contract for transport was done via AMR. And that was in itself an additional county-wide contract. So it just was an agency-specific.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that, I mean, looking just exclusively at the strengths, aside from the PERS increase and the binding arbitration, I'd say most of what's on there are things that are achievable with what we're doing right now without a merger. And not that I'm trying to pour water on the idea of a merger, but I'm just looking at those things. Most of those things, we're either already doing, or we're on the road to doing regardless of whether we merge or not.
And I have a question, Chief. In Louisville, what kind of integration happened there?
Well, we went from volunteer base to ALS transport, so we brought that in, it wasn't a merger. We brought ALS transport in. We did start exploring a merger with Superior. And that was in the works when I left there, but that hasn't gone anywhere. It's a little bit different model.
Yeah, but did the department move from volunteer-based to paid staff?
Yes.
And then
ALS transport was all career staff, yes.
Right, so you had paid firefighters, were they all paramedics, or were they, did you have two different groups, or?
Yeah, we hired fire medics and firefighter engineers. Okay.
Chief, if I could have a second?
Absolutely.
This is Mike. Many years ago, gosh, I don't know, 2008 or so, spoke to Henry Hampf about this. And we'd been back and forth with John Buchanan and the fire department at the time, and it just wasn't the right time to consider doing anything further. We thought about it, we backed away, we wanted to stay the same district. But one of the long-term driving needs that we have is our tax base is too low. And the only way that we can reset our tax base was Western Lane Ambulance, is to form a new district. If we do not do that, we continue to have to go out for operating levy. So the certainty of cash flow in the future from tax revenues is every four or five years becomes questionable. And that's not a long-term sustainable model. So the desire to find a better tax base was Henry's primary driving factor, but at the time, the personalities just didn't, it didn't work out. But truly, this has been something that we've been considering for a very, very long time, mainly for financial reasons.
No, I agree with you, Mike. I think when we get to the timeline, we'll talk about the taxi district and how we could change the levy rate. So we'll definitely get more detail on that.
Before we leave this section, can we ask what the effect is of the PERS increase for EMS personnel?
We don't know that for sure. I mean, if they went to fire, it would be, absolutely, it would be higher. Going from the OPERC, going from general employee to fire and police. We'd have to get that description from PERS, and we'd certainly ask for that if we were considering that. But I would expect it to, well, absolutely, the contribution rate would go up.
Okay, so like, for example, in Louisville, did you move everybody into the fire for para?
There was only one para. I think it was different for like state police and judges. And Louisville was unique in being in para. There was a fire police pension for the state, which most fire departments were in, so we were one of the few fire departments in para.
I see.
Let me ask a question on the tiered response and common industry response models. How, I'm not sure what that means compared to what we have now, is that?
Well, right now, we send an ALS response to everything, so that's, we have one or two, at least one, if not two, paramedics. So even if it's a lift assist, even if it's, you know, they have no medical issue, we're sending our highest qualified individuals there. Tiered response is, you look at it two ways. One, we could send a BLS crew, which would be a fire crew, to a call. Or we could have a fire crew, BLS level, basic life support level, be there first. And they could stabilize patients, start CPR, and then you would have your ALS responders show up. So it's a matter of, if you spread your, usually you have more BLS responders in a typical agency. Can they get there quicker before ALS? In some cases, they could here, especially on the north end of our districts. And like up river, you'd expect Mapleton or Swissum Deadwood, that would be the first responders, the EMTs, and then have ALS as your second or in a tiered response.
That's a perfect example of a tiered response.
So is there a standard of coverage for things like lift assists?
For us, not right now, it would be, that's handled strictly by Western Lane Ambulance District. So it would be an ALS response for that. We hope to start transitioning that to more of a BLS. And it's important then for our BLS crews to be able to recognize, you know, is this really a non-issue, it's not an injury, they just slipped and need help getting up? Or is there an injury that needs a paramedic's presence there? So we'd work on that and make sure that, you know, best care for our patients.
Chief, this is Jim, I've got a question.
Go ahead.
Does Oregon paramedic laws restrict the use of engine company paramedic assistant rigs? Or does it have to be paramedic on a transport vehicle?
For the state of Oregon, in order to get transport revenue, it has to be a minimum of a paramedic and an EMT.
Okay, so, so Matt, if the current dispatch does not allow for EMD, correct, emergency medical dispatch?
They have a version of EMD, yes.
Okay, so if they, if this came together, is there anything that would restrict this new agency from having a firefighter paramedic on an engine, and an EMT and a paramedic on the transport? They rolled together as tandem, engine gets there first. That paramedic firefighter, paramedic makes an assessment of the patient and says, this is BLS, you know, this isn't going to go advanced life support. Are we allowed to do that in Oregon? Or does it have to be only that medic on that transport can make that determination?
No, it's based on ASA, so if the ASA stakeholders would be Western Lane Ambulance, of course, then we would have an ALS engine that could respond and do ALS functions within the ASA.
Got it, thank you.
Welcome.
You guys are using a lot of acronyms here.
I'm sorry, assigned service area.
Okay.
That's, Western Lane Ambulance has an assigned service area, which is roughly almost 1,000 square miles. That is our area of response that we have to provide to our citizens.
That's a flexible model, then, if the staffing levels permit it. You could really expand services. I mean, we all know that a vast majority of 911 calls for service are going to be EMS-based, whether it's, you know, motor vehicle accident, or in-home medical, whatever. But, you know, the good piece to that is, if it is, you know, something of the nature to where it's strictly a BLS with transport, that engine can go back into service, that paramedic stays on that engine, and that two-piece, or two-personnel transport can handle the remainder of the call. Would that be acceptable?
Yep.
Thank you.
Another example of it is Salem Fire has the assigned service area up in Salem. However, they make the transporting decision as an ALS engine. And the private industry Falk does the transporting up there. Falk does the transporting up there, and whatever is based on the ALS engine in Salem, the ALS crew will make the decision, and they'll either go with or supplement a paramedic that's on the Falk ambulance.
Got it. Got it.
So I have a question. That if the call is outside of the district, the ASA of fire, and it's within the ASA of ambulance, now we've wasted a paramedic sitting on a fire engine that can't go out there because it's not their area. Am I correct?
It would be just what we do now, the ambulance would respond. I think Jim was saying if we had additional fire medics, they could be on an engine. But we wouldn't be depleting our paramedics to staff an engine. We would staff ambulances, that would be our priority.
Aren't we doing this to a degree now when we're rolling Sayusla Valley personnel on an EMS call?
We roll them with, in addition to Western Lane Ambulance, we would not roll them separately. We're talking about, we could do, if we had a lift assist, say at the bowling alley here next to the station, then the fire crew could handle that themselves. Right now, we would send the fire crew, well, we wouldn't send the fire crew, we'd just send an ambulance on that.
There's many, many, many staffing models and ways of doing it. We're not going to have to reinvent the wheel by any means, but we definitely can take the wheel and fit it to our vehicle that we're trying to accomplish on making sure that we provide the best patient care and life safety, as well as property conservation.
Another question, Matt, you have on here dependable staffing models, ours isn't dependable now?
This is feedback from the staff. That was what they believed is, you know, to have a more dependable staffing model in both districts, we would be combined and working together.
Thank you.
Chief House, do you think that's because of cross-training, position redundancy? Any speculation as to why that was the comment?
Trying to remember the conversation between the five that I've conducted and which one it landed on.
Yeah.
But my guess would be, yeah, I mean, being dual role provides a better service. And you have more flexibility and versatility to your staffing models than if you have cross-trained people.
The way I look at it is now we have five staff at the ambulance district, three to four at the fire district. And if we were to share those resources seamlessly, then we have nine resources to use, nine employees, or 10 employees. We can put them where we need them to be. And so I think then we get some, that's where some of the dependability comes in.
Oh, and I think Chief Polisi, or I'm sorry, Director Polisi can attest that most staffing models that you do are to the 90 percentile call, meaning that you handle your 90% of your call volumes based on your staffing models. And then your 10% are the surge events, things that are a little bit more above your normal call volumes. Right now, we are definitely meeting the call, the 90% on both sides. I think when we're talking about increasing, doing dual role standards, that you have more flexibility, and you have more players that are trained, cross-trained, that can play into the system. It's not just, I'm an EMS provider, or I'm a firefighter.
It's important to remember, and Matt said this, these are employee opinions. We didn't disagree or agree with any of them, we allowed them to have their opinion. And we certainly talked to them about it, but we didn't, we didn't edit these, so you're seeing the raw data.
Chief, real quick, so you said five EMS and four firefighter, which would be nine per 24-hour shift, correct?
Full-time, yeah, if you add in part-timers and volunteers, we may get up to 10, but
Oh wow, that's, yeah, that is. Because then you're looking at two paramedic ALS ambulances with two people on board. And then that could leave you five to six fire EMS on fire suppression equipment. And it gives you the flexibility to cross-staff if you need additional
What's that third ambulance call?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Well, we're getting four and fifth calls within the last 20 minutes nowadays, too.
Yeah.
Right.
Chief.
Thanks.
Yes.
So currently, if we include the volunteers that we have on shift along with our Western Lane Ambulance responders, how many between the two do we currently have?
Well, we have one career, then we have a part-timer, and then we're trying to put in two volunteers. We're going to be hiring the second full-time position here within the next couple of months. So we'll have two full-time, hopefully one part-time or resident, and then one or two volunteers. So we're hoping to have at least four. And then on the Western Lane side, we have the five full-time employees, and then one part-time. So you can't, you cannot add up to 10, but it varies from probably eight to 12, depending on what your staffing is for the day.
Okay, so the, I mean, the staffing model we're looking at essentially reflects what we already have, it's just the difference between a paid staff and a partial paid, partial volunteer.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
And I have a mock staffing model within our scheduling platform that I can show offline if you have further questions with it.
Yeah, I was just curious to see if, going into the merger staffing model, whether it would mean increasing what we're already using in terms of the number of people, but it sounds like it would be about the same, we're just, it's paid staff.
And I've actually got an org chart, I could, I wasn't going to show that, but yeah, I don't see any personnel increase. There may be, if we wanted to expand our training division, have a training chief, and that's going to be my recommendation to the board. So that would be one personnel, I see us increasing, but yeah, I think this model, working together, sharing resources, we don't have to add people to either side. With the cross-training, cross-certification, we'd cover.
So the training officer, I'm assuming, would also be, would they be responding? Would they be considered part of the staffing of the day if they're the training officer and, you know, there's
The opinion on the person, I mean, the person we have in mind is a paramedic, so we would use them as a paramedic if we need to. If we didn't hire a paramedic, yeah, I mean, whatever, they would actually, yeah, they'd be a responder. We're not big enough to have people just to sit in the office.
Right, so the training officer who is primarily a paramedic, would that person essentially also be cross-trained as a firefighter so that they're capable of responding to either?
Oh, absolutely. And we would encourage all our EMS personnel that wanted to be fire-trained to do that. It would not be mandatory for our EMS personnel. But I think we have quite a few that would like to be trained as firefighters. And so that's where, that's where it helps us, we can get And so that's, that's where, that's where it helps us. We can get, you know, eight firefighters on a fire initially while we're waiting for volunteers. And that's, that's really what we need on the, on the fireside.
So if, if we do this and we merge and go out for a new tax base, that would be an opportune time, wouldn't it, Matt, to put on our third ambulance like we talked about where our call volume is getting so large?
May not have to if we have more dual-role people in the place. You start moving your pieces kind of like in a chess game where you need them.
We have enough vehicles to do that.
Yeah, well, we have four ambulances, five ambulances, and then the engines were definitely, we're looking at surplus in some of the supplies.
Thank you.
This is great feedback. Any other topics or discussions on strengths? Okay, moving on. And one of the things I wanted to mention at the beginning, and Chief did hit on it, these are opinions. And then so what you'll see is opinions being in different ones. So you'll see what may have been a strength for somebody is viewed as a weakness for another individual. And so it's just trying to get a full circle of the picture of what everybody's feeling about, you know, what are the hopes and what are the concerns with doing a functional consolidation? So the next one is the weakness is would a functional consolidation merger of the two districts diminish our abilities to provide a service? And would one of the, would, would one of the functional consolidation agencies diminish in role of structure? The feedback that we received was decrease, decrease a level of service, less higher level medics versus lower level care. No plan, model ideas from administration on how a functional consolidation would look like daily staffing model. And that's what I was able to show the staffing model, kind of what we have a mock staffing model on our scheduling platform, just to kind of help answer the questions with daily staffing model. And then a higher cost due to an organized, an unorganized IGA and Wolfie, higher cost with a merger is a weakness. Others view the weakness in leadership, little bit of everything, more present leader, more support from leaders, speaking up for us and common support. Loss of identity, loss of EMS and fire-centric only, loss of volunteer identity. Diminished agency structures right now with a paramedic firefighter, EMT firefighter versus paramedic, paramedic. You may have a concern, it was a weakness, would be a diminution, the agency structure. Another weakness is patient concern, safety. Transport, Trent, excuse me, training costs for a dual role, that's a weakness, more money, higher level care, higher level training versus what is the term that we use in the fire service and EMS services inbred training? So in order to get these dual-role trainings, are we going to just do in-house training only? Are we going to look at, you know, sending them to a recruit academy at our neighboring agencies? Impact on the training budget, increased training of employees, loss of training at the gain of training for another prospective job assignment. And that was like, if we're spending more time training to fire, we're going to lose our EMS components. Team cohesion, learning to work together and adaptability, these are all the weaknesses. Is there more below that, Chief?
So let me ask, if you are training somebody who is a critical care paramedic to be a firefighter, is that, are those two skill sets more than a person can do expertly? Or are we just looking for competency in both disciplines? I mean, what would be necessary for someone to maintain their currency and expertise in both disciplines?
By no means, what I'm going to say is a slight comment to any occupation, but most agencies, fire districts will hire paramedics that are already trained as paramedics because of the cost and everything that goes into it. And it's easier to train the paramedics to become line firefighters.
Okay, and once they're trained, is there sufficient resiliency in the training regimen and recurrent training to have them keep their skills at the highest level?
I would say on, as we look forward to this, that merging, not merging, but, you know, using the training people that we have in place, I think that we can get where we need to be for, to accomplish the tasks. Right now, we have a fireside, he's still developing, but he's got good plans. He's got a lot of leadership that he's developing. On the EMS side, you know, we have, again, another strong quality person, bringing them together, which I am meeting with them occasionally. And look on how do we cross-train, you know, how do we make this work? How can we do it with minimizing overtime and maximizing why they're on shifts?
So do we have, we have current paramedics that are firefighters, is that correct?
We do to the state level. It's just a matter of having the state release them, their records from the Department of Public Safety. Once that happens, then we come into our district and we are the authority having jurisdiction that what the standard that we want is so it's, the state has its minimum standard and we have our standard that we want to create. It has to be the minimum standard. So our AHJ, the authority having jurisdiction usually is going to be higher than the state minimum standard. So then we bring that AHJ into place and we train everybody to that standard.
Okay, so of those who are currently paramedics and firefighters, do they, do they express any opinion about their ability to maintain their expertise in both disciplines?
I don't, I didn't hear any feedback saying that there was, oh, I'm going to have a hard time picking up the fire. I'm going off of the staffing model. I can tell you that one used to be a battalion chief for, you know, Sayeslaw rural fire protection. There's at least four of them at one point or another were firefighter ones. So then it's a matter of cross-training them to our expectations and the authority having jurisdiction.
And this is a very standard model around the country, having fire medics who have to keep up both certifications.
And all that's based on training hours, like the paramedics have certain training hours that they have to do annually and biannually. And same thing with the keeping up with their critical care paramedic. Then you have the fireside that they have X amount of training hours and CEOs, they have to, CEUs they have to obtain to make sure that they're up to date.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Matt, do you think, and Chief, on the cross-training, is that, do you see that as a requirement? Or is, is one of our risks that we, we have people who don't want to be a firefighter, a paramedic?
It would, it would not be, it would not be mandatory. We would not force anybody, any of the paramedics to become firefighters. They were hired as paramedics and we would certainly honor that. I think there are quite a few that want to become firefighters, and I think that really makes our model work if we decide to go down that path. But on the fireside, we do have minimal certifications on the medical side. So they would have to become EMTs and they probably have some more in-depth training. Western Lane personnel are going to have to be comfortable with SVFR personnel responding on medical calls. So there would be some enhanced training for the firefighter.
Do most fire and EMS agencies then, do they, do they, do they have it as a requirement that they be certified on both sides? I mean, is that something that new hires, we would require that?
I think I'm just starting to see now, I see some agencies going with paramedic-only, single-role medics. I think the majority in fire departments, you'll see a fire medic.
Okay, thank you.
What's the motivation, Chief, for, for somebody that's a paramedic to want to be a firefighter? Does it pay more when they have more expertise, more qualification, or?
Typically in a department, yeah, your fire medics will make more than, say, a medic or just a firefighter. There is, there is an enhanced retirement program for, for firefighters. So that would be an inducement. And a lot of people just enjoy being firefighters and working on fires and, and doing that as well as medical.
Well, I would think, you know, that an EMT, he can arrive with a normal outfit on while a fireman has to show up with all this asbestos stuff, which is, it's a lot more trying. So I would think that it would be a lot more difficult for somebody to want to do that.
And when we say, when we say EMTs, our firefighters will all be certified to that level. They'll be EMTs as well. So they'll be involved. Again, I'm sorry, we're throwing out a lot of, a lot of acronyms, Sam, but yeah, we, our firefighters will all be certified, the EMT basic level. Or hire, we do have some advanced EMT training that we're planning. We would even look at if some of our firefighters wanted to become medics or, or hire as medics to put them in the system as well. But yeah, I think there's a lot of incentive for paramedics to want to be firefighters as well.
Okay.
Chief, I just, so I understand. So at some point, would we get to the point where, when we are hiring people, we are hiring them specifically to be cross-trained? As, as opposed to saying, well, do you want to just be a paramedic or do you just want to be a firefighter? I mean, once we sort of go through the people that we have now at some point down the road, would we say, okay, everyone we're hiring from this point forward needs to be available and to want to actually cross-train between both?
That certainly makes it more easy to have that staffing model where everybody is cross-trained. I think you'd have to, to look at, are we getting proper candidates? Are we getting a good quality candidate that's a fire medic? We may have to look at our candidate pool and say, you know, maybe we have to just go with single-source medics. But I think ideally, it makes the model, staffing model much easier if everybody's cross-trained.
The chief, though, with a formal merger, basically, aren't we committing to that staffing model? Don't we have a choice or do we not? I mean?
I think you could, you'd have to have a certain number of cross-trained individuals. I don't know what that number is. Could you have one or two, or maybe one single-role paramedic on each shift? Even at a fire, you need ALS standby. So I think if you had a single-role medic at a fire, they'd be on an ambulance, they'd be doing rehab, medical care for the firefighter. So there, there would be a use for just a single-role medic, but you're limited then what they could do on a fire scene.
Yeah.
What about transports? Could you have firefighter medics in your normal operations and paramedics only on your transports?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, you wouldn't put a paramedic only on an engine. Well, you could, but I mean, it just, they wouldn't be, they couldn't serve as a firefighter then.
Right. You could have, you could have a paramedic EMT from either the fire or the ambulance side on the transports, right?
Yes.
Well, and if both boards decide they want to keep our ALS model, we just have to budget for it when we go out to the taxpayers. And there's, we don't have to lessen our service quality.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, that's, that's not, yeah, that would not be an acceptable outcome.
Yeah.
I think John, Director Murphy, my comment on that to agree with you is, and I guess from a financially-minded person, cost and budget is important, but not at the cost of service. And our delivery to protect society and our citizens frankly is more important.
You are correct, Ron. Ultimately, the reason that people pay the tax dollars isn't because of economics. They're paying it because they want a level of service that they expect, and that's what, you know, that's always got to be number one.
Absolutely.
And I think you'll see, and what we're really trying to present is I think this does result in a higher level of service with that, without adding personnel, without adding costs on, on either side. But again, I mean, that's, we still have to discuss that in detail, but I think that's what you're going to see.
Yes, Matt mentioned it's, you kind of see it on both sides. An opportunity is level of service, and then there's, you know, a weakness people have listed is the level of service going down. But I guess what I'm hearing is if you cross-train and get the right people at the right place at the right time, your level of service should be just as good or better.
Absolutely.
If you can accomplish that.
Yeah, and I don't agree with all these comments, but again, we didn't edit them, and I think it's important to get their comments out there. But yeah, we're not, I would not recommend going through this if we're going to have a diminished level of service on either side. It's got to help both agencies, it's got to help citizens of both districts, absolutely.
Well, I think it's kind of interesting that the first comment is a concern over a decreased level of service. And then second from the bottom is it's going to cost more because a higher level of training is required. So there's sort of a, you know, a contrary or contradicting points of view on that. So I think it just kind of shows that folks aren't completely, don't really understand completely what all of this is going to mean.
Well, yeah, and they haven't seen the plan. So I mean, this is just a first run at it, but you're absolutely right. And I think it's, these are comments we should address if we do go forward with a plan, make sure that everybody is comfortable with.
And based, and based on the questions that we provided, this is their interpretation. There was a lot more dialogue in the meetings that we have and trying to capture all the dialogue and keep it in a meeting relatively short and productive. I wouldn't be able to do it all, but definitely we get the highlights of the meetings that we had. Good. Any other conversations with weakness? So opportunities, what a functional, what a functional consolidation merger of the two districts create opportunities for increased level of service? Would a functional consolidation merger of the two districts create enhanced opportunities for employees or volunteers? And would a functional consolidation merger of the two districts provide a better level of service to Up the River? And that's the Mapleton-Swiss Home Deadwood area. Some of the feedback that we received from the staff on opportunities was, yeah, there would be advancement opportunities, varying levels with dual role that the employee could train to. We get kind of fixated that a fire department is just a fire department, but it's not just a fire department. Fire department, it actually fires only account for maybe 5%, and that includes dumpster fire, garage fires, every fire. But the majority of our calls are more related to life safety and the rescues that we do. So opportunities, increased training, level of service depending on the staffing model, medic on the engine or on, or at a outlining station. Opportunities in leadership and succession. Opportunity of financial, having one budget, one structure underneath, everything underneath the Wolfie versus having the three budgets that we currently have and three audits and everything that we deal with. Eliminating a five-year operational levy is an opportunity, and that's by creating the new tax base and X amount of years. When we say, yeah, we're ready to go out to the vote and see how this is received. We've been doing this for five, seven years. Everybody's providing things well, doing well, and now we're ready to go for the vote. Again, you'll see response models. There's a big one with the staff. Where do we fit in this big scheme of the organization that we're trying to do? You know, response model being a low-frequency, high-risk or a high-frequency, low-risk calls. Those are the ones that we want to look at, and it's an opportunity. Up the river, many of the staff didn't really see much benefit. However, maybe with the consolidation, Wolfie could have additional resources responding to those outlining areas until those departments say that they're en route. So we could send a chase car with additional staff to provide support. And then Swiss Home Deadwood or Mapleton come up on the radio, we can turn it around and send our, that support vehicle back. I think that is it for the opportunities. So I leave it to you guys to discuss.
You know, I think there's opportunity, excuse me, for organizational and, and cultural continuity. I mean, we are two districts operating together, but we've got different pay grades, different benefits. And I don't know if that has any effect on morale, but I know in my organization it would. So I think there's an opportunity to be, you know, it's a municipality, but one company and have one mission, one organization, one culture.
Chief, Matt, I have a question. One of the things I've been thinking about is that, so let's say we, you know, at some point we do this merge and we, we create a new district. I'm assuming that that district would more than likely encompass what is Western Lane Ambulance's current ASA, which would mean that we would, would that mean our fire coverage would also be part of that current ASA? And if so, what would that mean for Mapleton Fire District, Swiss Home Deadwood?
It doesn't, it doesn't mean that, Ned, but we'll talk about that during the timeline.
Okay.
And that's, that's a really easy question to answer, but we'll discuss it when we go through the timeline. Yeah.
Chief House, what do you mean by eliminating five-year operational levy?
Currently, Western Lane Ambulance District has to justify to the tax base every year, every five years of our operation levy at 45 cents per thousand. So if we were to come consolidate to a functional consolidation to an eventual merge, the goal is to eliminate that five-year operational levy. So every five years, we don't have to go back out to the voters for the money.
So Sam, SVFR has, has one permanent levy? And then Western Lane has a small permanent levy, and then they have this five-year operating levy that has to be renewed every five years.
Uh huh, okay. Thank you.
No further add-ons, comments? Concerns, a little bit more hefty on this one. So the concerns and challenges, what about a functional consolidation merger? So the concerns and challenges, what about a functional consolidation merger of these agencies is a concern for you? What do you think the major challenges facing a functional consolidation merger would be? Some of the feedback is who pays for what and who? Welfia under one, there's a question mark. Those are the questions that we had received. Again, you'll see cross-training is a challenge of to dual role, fire EMS training, single resource and the cost of it. Some concern is personnel pushback. Personnel pushback, meaning with the plan organized, eliminate the unknowns, being transparent, working in a direction to prove that it'll work down the line in the future. Another one was board buy-off, uncertainty of the board views of consolidation, board of directors changing positions in the election years is a concern, organizational chart, command, chain of command. And again, you see scheduling, staffing models is pretty much in all of these. One of the concerns is a private ambulance agency taking over the ASA, Western Lane losing the ambulance assigned ambulance service area to the privates down the line. Concern, if we do consolidate, the privates would take over the, again, the ambulance service area. Administration benefits versus staff benefits. And you kind of just touched on that, Director Green. Under the same Welfia benefits versus independent districts, so having equal cross-benefits around the line. Operation chief balancing time between the districts. Yeah, I can be the first one to say it'd be a lot easier to manage one versus three. And I think Chief and Dean would say the same. Marketing, functional consolidation, you know, having a marketing plan so that we can do the, bring it out to the community. They understand it's nobody's in the dark. That's definitely a concern. Losing financial support for high-quality medical response, repurposing or becoming more fire-centric. Patient care and patient safety is a concern. Lack of trust, administration, lack of transparency, a lot of unknowns, transparency, more feedback. Crew resource management, staffing model, single role versus dual role, decreased level of service. Lack of a venue for personnel to give objective opinions on the subjects. Zoom meetings, association dinners, more employee meetings. Another concern is cohesion between the districts. How do we play together? How do we get it to where we need to be? Another concern is dispatch and police, you touched on that earlier. Yeah, how do we do a tiered response if we are having some difficulties with dispatch? And then the last concern was, what's the plan? Again, you know, that's one of the ones that was voiced pretty adamantly was like, what was the plan? What are we doing? Let us see what we're doing, what we're trying to formulate the plan. We're trying to get there. So, up to you distinguished board members now to comment on this.
Well, I was, I was curious a little bit on the previous and then this one. What are considered the opportunities for advancement currently?
Not very. I mean, really, it's on the Western Lane side, it's with an unfortunate loss of an employee or retirement. And those are the secessions that we have. We have built in some succession, but it's not much where like Western Lane does have acting in capacity, which would be like a lieutenant to the captain. On the fire side, we only have three full-time people and they're all either captain or AIC. So by having more people in the mix, you would have more of an opportunity to develop the succession plan down the line.
I could see us reaching the size where we could use a battalion chief each shift to run the shift, both fire and EMS. We don't have battalion chiefs now. We probably wouldn't need captains if we had battalion chiefs. You may have a lieutenant at your outline stations, depending on the number of people involved. But hopefully we could have some advancement opportunities there.
Chief Schick, I was hoping you might address, I don't know if you feel this is maybe something systemic, which would be a concern or just an outlier. But if, you know, if an employee of one of the districts says there's lack of trust and lack of transparency administration, are there reasons behind that? Or is that just?
I think, yeah, I think that has to do with current negotiations. I mean, this is, this is a tough time to ask questions like that. I don't think that was a common viewpoint, but it's something that, I mean, communications is always going to be something that we have to work very hard at to be as transparent as possible. But I think some of that probably lies with negotiations, which you can't be as transparent as people would like.
And as we know, communication does also require listening.
Yes.
Just saying.
I know we brought this up, but there was a concern or there's always a concern, what happens to my job? So if somebody is in a particular role, say a paramedic doesn't have the desire to go to fire, we would grandfather that person in, correct? We at least.
Absolutely. Okay. Yeah, absolutely. There would be no job loss. I think, yeah, you have, that's the first agreement that everybody has to come with. The board would have to be very adamant, and I would recommend that as well. Nobody, nobody's going to lose their job. We want to increase personnel. We don't want to decrease.
I would expect there to be a difference in pay grade, however, with the individual who would be willing to serve both.
I think there should be, and we've been working on what would be a good steps for difference. For example, a lot of agencies will have, paramedic is between 5 and 10% more than, than a non-paramedic would make. So if they're a captain, paramedic, they make 10% more than a captain, single role would make. So and there's, we'd have to look at that. Okay, if there's no further comments on that, I was going to show you just a draft timeline, just to give you an idea of what this could look like. Again, we're not voting on this today. No decisions, comments, feedback, always welcome. If I can pull it up here. Okay, can you see potential timeline?
You stopped your screen sharing, chief.
Yeah, not yet. Okay. Here it comes. Now you see it? Okay. So I've broken this down into three different steps, major steps. First one, enhance sharing of personnel and resources. And we've actually started some of this with Welfia, but it still fits within that. The next step would be a functional consolidation. That's where we move everything under Welfia. And then the third one would be a merger. Each one of these steps would end with a board review and discussion and consensus that, yeah, we need to go on to the next step. I put just some estimates of how long that could take. It could be quicker. It would be tough to do it quicker, but it could certainly be longer. And again, that depends on what's going on, how comfortable the board feels. So with the first step, the enhanced sharing of personnel and resources, you know, I see that as lasting at least a year, possibly two years. And that would include, well, Western Lane and SVFR, we continue to exist just as they are. We have three budgets, three audits, three boards, just like we do now. We need to set a new organizational chart if we're sharing resources. There would have to be a very clear chain of command. So right now we have, say, two captains on one shift, one fire captain, one EMS captain. So if the EMS captain said, I need personnel over here, and what happens if the fire captain say, no, I need them over here? So we'd have to have a really clear chain of command. There would be a joint policy manual. We've already started that. Right now we're at, that's the Lexapro policy I've talked about in the past. We've done a staff review, admin staff review. Now we're doing an employee review of the policies and will soon be doing a board review. And I hope to have that finished by the end of this calendar year. We do have to start planning for the Western Lane levy renewal, that operating levy. No matter what we do going forward, we're going to have to do that levy renewal, at least this time, possibly again in another five years. We need to work on a joint strategic plan, and that was our recommendation last week. There will be Welfia goals and there'll be SVFR or Western Lane specific goals as well. We'd like to start with the cross-training, offer fire training for those EMS personnel that would like to do that. There's a lot of planning that has to go into that. Do they, they do it on shift? Are they going to do it off shift? Are there overtime issues? Do we do it internally? Do we send them somewhere? So there's a lot of things that go into that. So it's not as easy as just saying, okay, you're going to start this training. Advanced EMS training for fire personnel. This would not be advanced certification. This is just making sure that our, our fire personnel are up to a level that Western Lane personnel, the level of care they give now. So we want to make sure that we're not getting a decrease in the level of care, even though it'll be a BLS level and not ALS. I think if we go down this path and we start sharing personnel, that offers the opportunity to start moving them around to some of our other stations. Right now we staff Station One on the fireside and Station 10 or the ambulance base on the medical side. But could we staff Station One, Station Four and Station 10? Possibly put an ambulance, a Western Lane ambulance here at Station One. Spread our resources out a little bit. Your response times are going to get better. You're certainly providing better care to the north end of our district.
Chief, where's Station Four? Is that Sutton Lake or?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be north here. We definitely have more than just the three stations. It's just, this covers the most of our call, the majority of our calls, the majority of our population. We could, we should start looking at our collective bargaining agreements. That's the agreements with the unions. Not for economic discussions, but just, right now we have two CBAs. For example, the Western Lane contract has 15 articles. The fire contract has 30-some articles. They all say the same thing. They're just broken out differently. So if we could just sort of start the process of having the non-economic issues be the same for both districts. And we, we started to do that in these current negotiations, but the current negotiations were complicated enough. So we put that aside, just to have the similar agreements. And then after one to two years, we'd have to have a board review and a decision then, do we move forward? The next step would be a functional consolidation. I think you would do that along with your strategic plan review. Are you meeting your goals? How are that? Do you need to set new goals? But I think at that point, we look at, look at a functional consolidation. And if the board said yes, both boards say yes, this is what we want to do. So in a functional consolidation, that's when all employees and volunteers would move under Welfia, similar to what we've done with the administrative staff now. So Western Lane and SVFR districts would still exist. They just wouldn't have any employees. So the board of directors would still have to exist. The board of directors would still have to meet. That wouldn't change. There'd be one budget, and I put the one in quotation marks there. We'd have one budget. So revenue still comes from SVFR and Western Lane, but then it would be spelled out in the Welfia budget, all the expenses. And of course, there'd still be three audits because we have the three districts. Hopefully we could move to one collective bargaining agreement, and that would probably be when the next bargaining issue won't be this, this contract. We're just looking at a year, and it probably wouldn't be the next, the next contract. I think that would be done before we ever got to this. So down the road, we'd look at one, one collective bargaining agreement. That's when you, you match the economic issues for both agencies. If we did this, all firefighter-qualified employees on both sides would become what we call 7K exempt or be working 7K exempt schedules. And what that does, the government set a law, an FLSA law, and it's paragraph 7K, which is where we came with the 7K. But it says a firefighter can work on average 56 hours a week, and 53 hours of that would be considered regular time. So they get three hours overtime. Right now they're on 40-hour work week, and anything over 40 hours is considered overtime. That doesn't help our overtime issues, but it does, it does make it a little bit easier to calculate regular time and overtime. If we do decide that we're going to be, we've done the facility analysis, we want to move crews to Station, outline Station Four, then we start the remodel. I've got remodel stations one, four and 10 here. Right now upstairs at Station One, we've just got some drapes between Murphy beds. We'd want to make that more permanent. At Station 10, it would be nice if we could either add a bay or remodel a bay, that we could put a fire engine down there so we could have fire crews down there as well. And then Station Four, we have no living quarters there now at all, so require bedrooms. The bays would be fine. You know, at some point during this consolidation, we want to unify the training division. That would be to have one training chief for both that would oversee EMS and fire. Depending on how long this takes, we may have to do another operation levy renewal. Our revenue would still be coming from the taxing districts, the Western Lane taxing district and SVFR taxing district. So we'd have to keep up that operating levy for Western Lane. And then again, we'd have another board review and discussion if they want to move forward with a merger. We'd have three to five years of experience working together, much closer than we are now. And then the board to decide if they want to move forward, then we'd have to start talking about, well, we've got to get the public on board for that as well.
Can you scroll down a little bit? We're still up in the functional consolidation.
There you go. All right. Thank you.
Keep going. Thanks.
So I'm down at the H there. It's a board review and discussion. And then if we, if we move forward with a merger, everything's working great, or we've worked out the issues. We think a merger is the way to go for increased level of service, it'd be better for our citizens. Then we start that public awareness campaign. Because with a merger, we need to dissolve the fire district. That has to be approved by the voters. We have to dissolve the ambulance district, the health district. That has to be voter-approved. And then we also have to establish a new district, and that would be Welfia. And then that's where we set a new levy rate, a new permanent levy rate. So the operating levy would go away. This would be a permanent rate. There is no, every five years going out. And again, that has to be voter-approved. So you have, the voters have to approve all three of those. If for whatever reason they don't approve of one of those, the whole thing falls apart and it wouldn't happen. So we'd want to have a big public awareness campaign underway. So in with the permanent levy rate, there's a lot of different ways we could do this. Right now, if you add up all the levies for both districts, it comes to a little over $2.31. We could establish a new taxing rate, a new tax rate at that amount, or we could even go a little bit higher. We could say we'd like a higher amount, but we'll only, we'll start at $2.31. We could tell the voters this. And at that point, the Western Lane operating levy goes away. We have a permanent levy at whatever rate the board decides. At the same time, and this goes to Ned, your question, we could establish tax zones. And this is, and I put this in the board, board information, resources on onboard. But the ORS specifies that within your district, you can have different tax zones based on the service that they receive. So the SVFR district citizens would pay the $2.31 because they get Western Lane service and they get SVFR service. Outside the SVFR district boundaries, the 120 square miles, they would pay the ALS rate, whatever the board decided for that. So Mapleton and Swiss Home Deadwood residents would only pay for ALS service, which could be the .7698 or higher. That would be up to the board to decide what rate that would be. So I think it's not, it's not a complicated process, but it is a process. Question?
I say, thanks. That answers my question. I was just wondering how that would work, but it makes sense. They need to have their own fire district and just pay for the ALS service.
Yeah, and if they ever decided they wanted to talk to us about joining this, this Welfia, I mean, we could certainly have that discussion. I don't see that going that direction right now, but who knows what could happen in the future? I mean, I think the board should be willing to listen. I just don't know where that would go.
Chief, do we know if that would be a, what the rates are in Mapleton and Swiss Home and Deadwood? I mean, I assume they have, they're tax-based, right?
Yeah, they have, yeah, they are. They don't have a lot of assessed value there. So I think Mapleton's budget is like 200,000 a year, and then Swiss Home is about 100,000 a year. And then they also have what they paid to Western Lane, which is not very much. I think Mapleton's is like $2, a little over $2 now, just for fire.
So Chief, in the first scenario, when we're talking about cross-training firefighters, or was it? Cross-training, fire training for EMS and advanced EMS training for fire personnel. I'm assuming that that would require some sort of financial incentive for those to opt to do that?
I don't, I don't think so at, at first, until we had a salary schedule agreed upon by the boards. I think we'd have to have the discussion, do they move to fire and police PERS? That's a decision the board would have to make. I think just the ability, I think the individuals I've talked to are real excited about being able to work as firefighters occasionally. It's, it's an enjoyable job. I mean, I, I think they would see the benefits in that. But whether or not, that would all have to be decided, whether or not, you know, they get compensated at a different rate.
Okay. So at this point, it would simply be, it's an option for them if they choose to do so, and it's essentially just for them to have the opportunity to learn one or the other and potentially work those shifts if they wanted to.
I think they would still, in, in this model, they would probably, at, at the climax of this model, yeah, you'd be able to maybe put them on an engine. But I think, you know, initially, at least for the first year, year and a half, they would probably still be on an ambulance, but able to help on a fire scene if they got there. But again, I think giving that option to, to our officers to say, hey, you've got ten people on the scene that can put on an SCBA, that gives us a lot of different options to do. Or eight people, or six people, however many. I mean, it just helps a lot.
So, so would we, if that were the case, would we begin carrying extra turnouts, PPE, for, you know, let's say you get on scene and you need an extra firefighter, there's an EMS guy or, or a girl, and, you know, and they're capable and you need them. Would they just, or would they just carry, anyone who's firefighter-trained, would they just carry that extra equipment with them if they're on a shift in case they needed to, or would we just carry extra?
And that's, and that's what we had in Colorado. We had, each ambulance had two SCBA's and they put their bunker gear in there.
Okay.
So it was, I know that takes cabinet space, so we'd have to make sure, do they have that? But that would be the easiest thing to do, and that's probably the most common thing to do.
That makes the most sense.
I wonder, Chief, this schedule looks like five years, functionally, the three different steps. And it would seem to me that we would want to involve the public more intensely from the very beginning, so that we would be listening not just to them, but also to our employees, so that we could determine their comfort level, you know, as they see these pre-merger synergies and that sort of thing. It would seem to me like we, we would need to get a lot more public feedback early on, so that folks could share their concerns with us, just like our employees have.
Oh, absolutely.
We could share with them that if we, if we were to go down this path, we have five years to keep watching and learning together. You know, we don't know every bump in the road that will occur, but as we examine these, we can check back with the different constituencies to find out how they're feeling, the employees and also the public about the service. And then the second point I'd like to make is, it would be great for us if we could see a budget in today's dollars for how you see this department at the end. So if you assume the promotional opportunities and positions that you would like to have, the staffing, the different stations, dual-purpose EMS, fire, what would that budget look like and, and what tax levy would be necessary to support that? In today's?
Yeah, that's a good, good question. Yeah, I, like I, as mentioned earlier, I don't see us adding a lot of personnel or that we have planned right now. You know, yeah, I think we'd have to really look at the dollars. I, I would guess that we're not going to see a tremendous increase, but I'd want to look and see if there's something we were missing or not. But I think it's, we know we're getting busier on the ambulance side, so I think this would allow us to not have to add personnel on that side. So there'd be some savings, I think, if you stayed from, if you stayed, if you joined versus if you stayed separate. Yeah, those are good questions.
I think, I agree, I agree with Larry that it's definitely something we would want to get ahead of the curve on in terms of educating the public. But I also think that, at least for this, the enhanced sharing part, I think most of that is something that people are already assuming that we're doing in terms of cross-training and responding. I, I, I would, you know, my feeling is we wouldn't begin to have those kinds of educational discussions with the committee until towards the end of the enhanced sharing. And if we decide it's time to go into functional consolidation, to me, that would be the starting point of having those conversations.
That's a good point. It, it would be great just to get feedback from the citizens. Yeah, we haven't noticed any difference. It's still great service, and that would be good to know as well.
Well, I, I think it kind of depends on how well the newspaper does their job in sharing this, this kind of content with the public. Because right now, during a COVID time, it's difficult to have public comment meetings, open houses and things like that, where you can share this kind of information. So we don't want the public to feel left out of the process, and there should be a calendar, if you will, when we can revisit employee concerns and their feedback, and also ask for additional comment from the public. Because if we're, if we're going to be successful in this effort at the end, asking voters to approve the dissolution of tax districts and approval of new tax districts, it, it just, it's going to have to be a process of bringing people along, so they understand the value. That's why I say it'd be nice to see a budget of what, what is, what the potential costs might be. You know, we, we've already discussed the increased PERS. And then, of course, we have this other session we're going to have next week, where we have to address how we're going to cover the unfunded liabilities of both districts, how we will cover that as part of that discussion.
Chief?
Yes?
Have you and Matt decided on a model of what we want to use if we do this?
You mean like organizational chart or?
Yes. And, and the reason I ask, how long would it take for you to put together a plan? The organizational chart, what we're going to look like? So all of our employees will see that very soon, and it can be gone over, and we get their buy-in for that plan. And if the employees are for it, now the boards, if we come together, we have a unified front, then we can start presenting this to the public as both boards, staff, and everybody, that this is the model we want to move to, and here's our timeline.
Well, yeah, that's a good, good question, John, but I think, and that's one of the things we have to decide. Do we want to spend fifty thousand dollars on a feasibility study? Or would we rather just take, you know, this plan is outlined and really flesh out all the details? And absolutely, the, the employees are going to have to be a major part of that.
I mean, to me, if, if we don't have their buy-in, there's no need to move forward.
Right, absolutely. No, they, they would have a buy-in into it. And I wouldn't be surprised. I mean, we have, I think the concerns now are because they haven't seen a plan, because there is no plan. I think absolutely, if they were to see a plan, help develop that plan, make sure that everything that we see has been addressed. Maybe the things that we haven't seen, they can point out, need to be addressed.
I mean, can we get, if we do that in six months, or how long do you see that happening?
I think it, I think it's an ongoing process. I think it could be in six months. I think we're doing most of those in the enhanced sharing of resources. That had nothing to do with a merger or functional consolidation. That's just being under WELFIA. And we're doing that. I think then preparing the larger plan, I think that's something that we could probably do in six to nine months. It'll feed off of the strategic plan. I, I hate to pin ourselves to a calendar, but I think, I think we could do that. And I don't think we need to spend fifty thousand dollars to do it.
I mean, it, it appears to me that with your and Matt's experience and the experience we have at the ambulance crew, we could put together a model that is acceptable to our organizations and move fairly rapidly.
I agree. It's, yeah, how rapidly do you want to move is, is the question.
Well, that, will the model evolve? If you, if you go back to your timing plan and you have years one and two where we're kind of coming together on our services, the model that you present in three to six months may evolve over time.
And those, those timelines are estimates on my part. I put a Gantt chart together for the first step. Really, we can accomplish a lot of that in a year. I just didn't want to rush things. I wanted to make sure that the boards are comfortable with the direction we're going. We could be here a year from now deciding to go to a functional consolidation. I'm okay with it taking longer if boards are not comfortable yet, or the employees aren't comfortable, or the citizens aren't comfortable.
I guess all I'm thinking, Chief, if this is the direction we're talking about, we need to establish a unified front as quickly as we can.
Yes, that's what we're, that's what we want to make sure, make sure everybody understands what we're looking at. We're using the same terminology. I think we do have to look at a budget. I think that was a great point by Director Farnsworth. Make sure that this is not going to cost drastically more. And that, we have to make sure that we have a better level of service for fire and EMS.
I just want to-
I, I think it does. Go ahead, Ned.
I just, I just want to caution the idea or what sounds like to be the idea of, of getting information about a potential merger out sooner rather than later, only because we need to, when you start talking merger, even if we're just talking in this sort of this esoteric sort of maybe possibility thing, the, the impression is that it's something that we are moving toward. I mean, to me, presenting a, a, a chart of how it all breaks down and budgets is something that we, is something we would begin rolling out if we decided in at least maybe a year, certainly not in the next three months or six months. Because once you sort of open that door and you start providing information about that, people are going to assume that that is where we're going. So I just think we need to be really careful about when we begin releasing that information, when we begin sending out flow charts, when we start talking about budgets. I mean, to me, we sort of, we need to get down the very first part of this first, which is the, the sharing of, you know, of training and getting through this first phase. Then maybe you're into it, if it's going really well, then we start having serious discussions about, well, maybe we should start talking about a flow chart, getting feedback from our employees about that. So that as we move into the next phase, if that's what we decide to do, which is a full consolidation, then, then we begin educating our public, we begin educating people. I just, I worry about rushing towards educating the public about something we haven't decided we're going to do for sure yet.
Director Burns, you had a comment?
Yeah, I, I under, I would love to see a budget as Bishop, as Director Farnsworth brought up. We have them now, but I'd love to see what one would look like five years from now. And just, and then I go by what Ned just said, you know, opening Pandora's box. Well, we just did it. We have a full merger on our screen right now. It's happening. The number one thing that's going to happen after today is the rumor mill. That's going to happen, that we're going down the pipe as far as consolidation, a new tax district and all that. We have to be online, we have to be prepared, and we have to make a decision. Is this at all viable? Because we have, we have a budget. We've been talking about budgets. We have a flow chart here of a full merger. Everything you said, we need to be careful, we're doing it. And you know as well as I do, there's people watching this and looking at it right now. The rumor's going to be hidden tomorrow. That's the number one thing that happened in nineteen ninety-nine. And I remember Rick remembers when the city of Florence decided to get out a fire service and go as size for rural fire, was the rumor mill.
Good point.
I think a lot of what's been said, operationally, financially, I think the question of feasibility should be the thing we address immediately.
Yeah.
We're kind of doing that. I mean, with, with, we're starting with the Q and A with staff, which we need to start with staff. But ultimately, if we spend a lot of time and money and a year from now find out, holy crud, this might not work for various reasons, and not just financial, I think I would, as a director, would rather know sooner than later.
True. And, and Director Green, you hit the nail on the head as far as talking to the staff of both departments. Because they're the ones who are going to have to live with whatever we make the decision of. But I will tell you, most of the people who, in nineteen ninety-nine, that were on both departments, who did not want this, the consolidation and the fire service, they wanted the city, they wanted the rural, and they were so separate. After probably two years, once that IGA went into force, all the rumors, all the disgruntled, they realized that it was a good thing, and they were all supportive of it.
Yeah, I realize that-
But it's the unknown.
Yeah, we have a history of two districts, and what comes with that is identity.
Yep.
Emotion and spirit and brand and love for what I've worked, you know, been a part of, either as a citizen or as an employee. So I think there's some education involved. But I think if there's any question, though, that this isn't feasible, and, you know, conceptually, you know, I, 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 conceptually, I support the idea of discussing this further, but I think we need to discuss that feasibility sooner than later.
Well, I, I think this first step is something that we're going to be doing anyway, under the WELFIA umbrella. Really, the major decision that has to be made by the board is the functional consolidation, moving everybody to WELFIA. And again, I think we'll have, that's a year away to have that major discussion. We'll certainly see how it's working, this enhanced sharing of personnel and resources. But still, we're a year away from a major decision.
Chief, if you put up the steps again, our, I guess what I'm hearing, and I, and I wonder what the rest of the boards, the rest of the board members say, would be, your first step, it takes one to two years, and I don't know if anybody's opposed to moving into that phase.
Can you see it?
And, and my general, yes, thank you. And a general comment for me, I, I think I'm pleased with this timeline. I, I think it's, it's going to take three to five years, as Director Farnsworth said, because you're really talking about changing cultures and bringing people along. And it's, it's, that first year or two, though, is, is a pretty significant step of bringing everybody together.
It's rough.
Well, when I, when I map this out on a Gantt chart and get some timelines, I don't go out much farther than a year for that, the first step here. I put two years because we may not be ready to make that next step, and we may need some more experience.
Well, I would say the timeline looks pretty good. And I wondered if everybody would be in agreement with kind of at least looking with that first step, if you think that's a reasonable start.
I have, I have a couple of comments before I get off with down that.
Go ahead, Mike.
Basically, I think Director Green's spot on about the feasibility study. And if I remember right, the consultant group that we were talking with actually offered, part of the feasibility study was a community polling to see if the community was in agreement with it. And I think that would be a wise thing. I mean, you get halfway down this and you realize the community's not supporting. There's no reason to pursue a merger or go any further. But from that standpoint, just a couple of details, would the end district be a fire district?
Be a fire and EMS authority.
Is a fire and EMS authority classified under fire, basically, fire police?
It'd be a special district. You mean as far as, as far as-
Health district. It's not a health district, it'd be a fire district, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, my understanding, fire districts do qualify for more grants than health districts.
Absolutely.
But from that flip side, there's one advantage that the health district has. I want to know if, if we're good with giving up, and that would be the, the power of eminent domain. And do we ever see a need for eminent domain in the future?
I think fire districts have that, right?
I'm not sure if they do. I know-
Yeah, they do. I'm pretty sure they do.
They do.
I'm not sure that we would ever do that.
No, I have no idea why we would do it. I just knew that was something, I thought it was special to, to help district. But now, here's the, here's the hard thing. So we get halfway into this, we get a year or two into this, and it's not working. How do we unwind?
So if you're at step one, I mean, it's really right now, it would be the authority. So if you're at step one, I mean, it's really right now, it would be the authority. If you want to get rid of the authority, then both districts, just go back to where they, they, they were. Employees go back to their original district. That would be same, if you do a functional consolidation, again, if that were to fall apart, employees go back to their original district. That's why the districts have to remain in place. But that would be, that would be difficult to do, but it can certainly be done.
Yeah, we still will have shared employees right now, particularly in admin. Would they, would you conceive of them still being shared or would we have to go out and hire our own admin people again?
Yeah, well, that'd be up to the boards to decide, do they want to go back to an earlier version of the IGA? Or, or would they, would they have to hire a new executive director, a new finance manager, a new HR, um, new operations chief? Yeah, okay, for both sides.
Chief?
Yes.
Uh, this is Jim Polisi, by the way, and I've been listening to all my fellow directors and I've been making notes. And you guys have brought up some incredibly good comments. And first thing I, I, I want to say is, um, I've been involved in this numerous times and I support it. From the functionality of, I know it does increase services. And I heard it earlier and I, I think it was great to hear that. Well, who has input? Everybody has input, directors, the line staff, the public. Uh, it's important to hear everybody's feedback. Because going through a consolidation, it brings a lot of fear. And it brings anxiety, it brings anxiety to the employees. Makes them wonder, well, what's going to happen next? And one of the biggest breakdowns that created that was a lack of communication. Everybody must be together. I don't care if you're a rank and file or management or an elected official. You have to be able to hear everybody, hear their concerns, but come up with a workable solution. Uh, uh, I, I heard about grants. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Grants are there. There's startup grants for new emergency services districts. Which this would actually become an emergency services district. It entails fire, EMS, search, rescue, whatever, however you want to do it. But when you bring together EMS and fire and you're expanding services to the community. The community needs to understand that they're not going to see any difference. They're, the trained professionals are still going to be there. Your long-term ability as this community grows and it's growing. You might as well be on the front end of it instead of on the back end of it. Uh, one thing that I did make a note to is that unfortunately, we're kind of tied up because of COVID. But workshops for the public are really important, not just for the public, but for the board of directors. For my fellow directors on the EMS side that may not understand the functionality of how fire apparatus is set up. What they look like, how the EMS component fits into it. We need to make sure that everybody understands everybody's operation. Um, the transition period, yeah, it is going to be slow at the beginning. But once it hits that certain plateau, it's going to go incredibly fast. Especially if there is positive feedback from all concerned parties. And what I mean by concerned parties are all the stakeholders, staff, public, future employees. Uh, everybody needs to understand that as we're going down this path, there are going to be bumps. But they can be worked out. And I feel very confident in what Chief Schick and Chief House have done. To bring to all of us as directors. What they see as a good service plan, good model, it's going to change, it's going to fluctuate. And just seeing what, I've been reading in the local newspaper about all this new development. I'm like, wow, how are we going to keep up with this? And if we don't get on board with it now, we're really going to be struggling. And I mean, both sides, we're all taxpayers. I pay into EMS and fire. I want to make sure it's there and I want to make sure my neighbors have it. And if we have an incident, we need to make sure that we have sufficient resources to take on that next incident. Because they do happen in bundles. Uh, one other thing I, I saw was, uh. Uh, Chief House, maybe you would be able to, to pull up this data. Since fire has been rolling with EMS on the call volume side. Do we have any data to show what the response times were and have they decreased? Or have they increased, number one? Number two, have we had any multiple incidents where both entities have been dispatched to one call? Did I, am I coming clear on that?
Yeah, I will get off with you offline and make sure I got your questions more dialed in. I'm at home, I don't have anything to write it down, so.
Gotcha. Gotcha. And then also, um, on the tax base. I, I am not supportive, this is just me speaking, I'm not speaking for both boards. But I don't believe that there should be any additional cost to the taxpayer. I think if the two budgets came together, I believe that's a very good starting point to get the operation up. Uh, but I do support consolidations. I think regional, regionalization is important. And once we, if we do agree to this, there's going to be a lot of people watching, how are they doing this? And, and I don't mean locally, I mean in other areas of Oregon. Oh, look what they're doing on the coast. So I believe in being a, uh, first paver of the new walk down a path. And I think that once it starts, you know, do you want to cut bait or do you want to fish? I want to fish.
Yeah.
And with that, I will be quiet.
Thanks, Jim.
Um, I, I think Jim raised some good points and he sort of illustrates what I'm talking about in terms of. We, we need to figure out how and if this is going to work before we can educate the public about how and if it's going to work. And that's why that first year, I think we need to just focus on internally, how are these things going to work? How are we going to cross train? Is that working? Do they like it? Do our employees like it? Once we get to that first year and if things are rolling into place, then we can talk about, okay, now we can go to the public and say, hey, everybody. Our next step is to do a, uh, you know, in, in this consolidation is to do, uh, you know, join forces together. This is how it's going to work. This is what we've done for the last year. This is what we spent our time doing. This is how it's been working. Now we can explain it to you. I just, we need to do that before we can rush out and let people know what our plan is going to be. Because we don't even know what it is right now, not really.
Right.
And I think the big thing we have to do, I believe 50% of the public does not understand how we are operating now. It's confusing to a lot of people.
Sure.
And what we have to explain to them when it's time is how and why it will be better.
John, I'd like to add what you said there about, uh, about understanding what's going on. You know, I've been trying to for almost a year now to figure out what the hell is going on. And I'm still, I, I compare it to, to, uh, entering the ballgame in the fourth inning. And I don't even know what the rules are. And all of a sudden you hand me a bat and I don't know what to do with it. I mean, that's kind of where I feel, but I think I, I support what, uh, the chief has here in his top potential timeline. I think it's a good timeline, I really do. I think he spent a lot of time figuring out the pros and cons of it and I'm pretty much, uh, in agreement. I think this is the way we should go and at least move forward. We can talk about it and talk about it and talk about it, but we need to get on it and just get moving on it if we're going to do it.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, any more feedback? Well, I appreciate all the feedback you've given us tonight. Um, like I said, we'll, we'll continue along this enhanced resource sharing. I don't think that's, uh, that's more at the operations level. And then we'll start fleshing out a plan to give, uh, the directors a little bit, something more to, to look at and, and to give a feedback on. And including the employees in that as well. Okay?
Thanks, Matt.
Remember, next week we have PERS.
Can't wait.
Thank you. Chief House, are you still there?